I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the South River Board of Education regular meeting of Thursday, September 25th, 2025. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, laws of 1975 of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On January 15th, 2025, the notice was delivered to the office of the South River Borough Clerk and posted at the Board of Education Administration Building. On January 15th, 2025, the notice was faxed, mailed to the following newspapers, Home News Tribune, The Star-Ledger. And on January 15th, 2025, the notice was posted at the South River Borough Clerk's office. Mr. Rosa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bazak.
Mr. Bazak has been excused.
Mr. Budson.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Anwoodaway.
Here.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Young-Yao.
Here.
Mrs. Urbannick.
Here.
Ms. Shizza Hussein.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Okay, our first item on tonight's agenda are the minutes of the meeting. Mr. Rosa?
No additions from our pre-meeting.
Okay, so Board members, what is your pleasure on the August 18th, 2025 regular meeting minutes?
Move the reading of the minutes.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Vice President Nielsen and a second by Ms. Sadowski. Are there any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the use of facilities. Mr. Rosa?
So we have some additions. It's number 907, number 912, number 921, number 922, and number 924.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions on those additions?
Yes, I would like to abstain from facility use, number 856 and number 901, please.
Noted.
So noted. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Nielsen, move the use of facilities in accordance with board policies.
There is a motion by Vice President Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lau. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Financial report, Ms. Lau.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is in receipt of the financial report, which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the revised reports of the Board Secretary and Treasurer of School monies for June 2025 be approved and ISO move.
We have a motion by Ms. Lau.
Second.
And we have a second by Vice President Nielsen. Are there any questions on the financial report? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to the Superintendent of Schools for her report, Dr. Zercher.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Today, we had an unexpected incident when we had to evacuate our middle and elementary schools due to a fire alarm going off. And it was raining. We took our elementary school to the high school and we took our middle school to the ELC. And I really just have to commend our students and our staff. They did a tremendous job, just really following instructions, following directions, getting there quickly, waiting to hear for direction and then returning as quickly as we could once the building was clear and just really resuming their activities for the day. So they did a wonderful job and we moved, you know, over 1,200 students in a short amount of time. And they were excellent. And thank you also to the ELC and the high school because they had to readjust a bit in order to give us that space. And they did a tremendous job as well, supporting the other two schools. So thank you for that. So we have had some unexpected occurrences this year to the start of our school year, but really a lot of positive energy, a real clear sense of purpose for both staff and students. We've been noticing, had a wonderful homecoming. We have a homecoming dance coming up that's hosted by our parent group. Really a well-attended event. And just a lot of great things going on throughout the district. Our newest addition, our educational annex is almost ready to open. And really, we're welcoming 45 additional pre-K students that will be attending that school. So we're really excited to open that up. Our back-to-school nights, most of them have taken place. We have two more coming up. But we invite and encourage our parents to really attend these events. We have some literacy nights coming up, a lot of other parent events that will be exciting. So please be on the lookout in our ERAMs for that. Our website has received some upgrades. We have a new AI page, which is now live and available. This dedicated page outlines our guiding principles and beliefs about the use of AI. We know that it is very much in our lives and using it safely and responsibly is a priority for the district. So there are parent resources on this page as well. So we encourage our parents to please visit the page and learn more about how we are using AI in school. And we also have a new Contact Us feature. We have really enhanced this Contact Us feature to where parents can select which school or department they need to communicate with. And the message that they send will automatically be routed to that specific department and school, therefore making that communication that much easier and accessible for our parents. There's also a translate feature on our website and parents can certainly translate their message and send it to us in their preferred language as well. And we anticipate being able to return those messages and provide a response within 24 hours. So we really encourage parents to be able to use that feature. I will let Mrs. Bush talk about Dr. Trevisano's report. And our other departments have also included their report as attached to my superintendent update. And just as a reminder to the community, each month, the superintendent report, including all of the reports from the departments, are posted on the superintendent's page. So if you've missed anything, missed a meeting, you can certainly access it there. And so concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zercher. Do any Board members have any questions or comments on the superintendent's report? The report will be approved under the consent resolution. At this time, the Board is going to open the meeting to the public where you may address agenda items only. There will be a public portion toward the end of the meeting where you may address items that are of interest to the Board. If you'd like to address agenda items at this time, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to a 10-minute time limit.
My name is Norman Scheinberg. I live at 24 New Street. I just saw the new building, the education annex. I guess things are going on that I'm unaware of. It's a pretty big and nice building. Could you tell me what it's being used for?
It is being used for pre-K.
Because I just came in, I didn't hear everything. You also have that other big prefabricated structures, I think, that are being used for pre-K as well, correct?
That's our early learning center, yes.
That's pre-K as well?
It is.
So this is just more space for pre-K?
Correct.
It's nothing fundamentally different?
No.
Okay, the only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address agenda items at this time? On first call? On second call? And on third call? This public portion is now closed. We will move on to other items in our agenda. The first item, under President of the Board, is a statement that I would like to read. And it reads as follows. "The Board has thoroughly reviewed a recent personnel issue with the superintendent and our legal counsel. At this time, the majority decision of the Board is to not take action. Rather, we have directed the central and building-level administrative teams to implement all necessary and appropriate educational supports to ensure success for our students and maximize performance and success for all involved staff. The superintendent and Board will be closely monitoring this matter moving forward." Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Mr. Budson?
There's nothing on the agenda that I was like this superintendent said. Homecoming was this weekend and I had to convey actually all the people that came out to watch the parade and the people that worked on the floats. They were very well done. And so for our girls' Socrates, undefeated, that's a plus. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next committee, Buildings and Grounds. Vice President Nielsen.
Nothing to report, Madam President. But again, like Dr. Zercher said, Mr. Johnson's report is inside the superintendent's report. So if you'd like to review it, you can see that the individuals who keep our campus up and running are doing a lot and we thank them for everything they do. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Under Finance, Ms. Lau.
Thank you so much. I will provide a brief summary. So the agenda approves multiple grants, a dual certification pathway grant along with state aid for adult basic skills and non-public programs, contracts span dual enrollment with Kane University, AP computer science software, professional development providers, nursing services, and psychological evaluations. Additional agreements cover transportation, graduation events, yearbook publishing, field trips, security, and cooperative purchasing. So the Finance Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 8.1 through 8.24 with additional items 8.26 through 8.31 on the agenda as listed, including routine items and metas. All I have for this evening.
Thank you. Our next committee is our Instruction Committee. Ms. Bush.
Sure, before I get to our resolution, just an update. Dr. Trevisano and our staff have been very busy over the summer preparing for the start of the school year. So the summer included over 90 curricula that was revised so that it would be ready for the start of the year, new teacher orientation, prepared for a new literacy rollout, web staff training there as well. And we have an update on state testing that is being revamped. So there'll be an October pilot assessment that is required throughout the district. All the schools in New Jersey have to take part in that. Still, grades three through nine will be NJSLA testing and the NJGPA for the high school graduation requirement. So that is an update on his report, Dr. Trevisano's. And again, the full report is in our superintendent's report if you wanted to review it. The Instruction Committee, though, after review of the items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends the approval of items 9.1 through 9.8 with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush.
You're welcome.
There are no items under negotiation. Mr. Anwoodaway, would you please report on policy and legislation?
Sure. The Policy and Legislation Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the item 11.1 with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items.
Thank you. And our Human Resources Committee, Vice President Nielsen.
Thank you, Madam President. The Human Resources Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the items 12.1 through 12.16 with additional items 12.17 through 12.20 on the agenda as listed, including routine items. And that's all I have for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Our Safety and Risk Management Committee, Mrs. Sadowski.
Thank you. The Safety and Risk Management Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of items 13.1 through 13.4 with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Residency Committee, Ms. Young-Yao.
Thank you. The Residency Committee, after review of all items on this month's agenda and upon recommendation of the superintendent, recommends approval of the item 14.1 with no additional items on the agenda as listed, including routine items.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to go back to the consent resolution. And I would ask if there are any abstentions, any resolutions that want to be read separate, or any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Rosa, would you please read the consent resolution?
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolution of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. And whereas the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the said Board of Education in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. And those are, to the President of the Board, 5.1, under Finance, 8.1 through 8.31, under Instruction, 9.1 through 9.8, under Policy and Legislation, 11.1, under Human Resources, 12.1 through 12.20, under Safety and Risk Management, 13.1 through 13.4, under Residency, 14.1.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent resolution?
Nielsen, move the consent resolution.
We have a motion by Vice President Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Young-Yao. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Budson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Anwoodaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Young-Yao?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbannick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have a few more committee reports before we open it up again to the public. Our next one is the School Board Borough Council Liaison Committee. Vice President Nielsen.
Thank you, Madam President. We were finally able to get all parties involved with the South River Rec and Borough Council for a meeting that we spoke about in executive session, I believe it was last month. We will be meeting on October 2nd at 10:00 a.m. in the Board Conference Room. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Our PTA Liaison, Mrs. Sadowski.
Thank you. All the PTAs are busy planning events for the school year. The elementary and primary PTAs are hosting book fairs, having fall frolics. I do believe there's a Halloween dance coming up for elementary school. And Hispanic Heritage Night is upcoming as well. All information on how to sign up for PTAs is available on the Facebook page for each of the PTAs as well as in the ERM. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And our South River Public Library Liaison, Mr. Budson?
On Monday, September 29th, the library is having an open house. They're inviting everyone to come out. They will have refreshments in a wrap. October 2nd, they're having a Halloween decoration giveaway. October 9th is the meditation class. October 14th is the paint and sip. And the adult craft is October 21st. And that's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask our Student Board Representative for any words that she would like to report on. Ms. Hussein, welcome.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you so much for having me on this team. I feel really grateful and I have really pleasured to meet every single one of you right now because I'm kind of just like listening more. But I think so far, the school year has started off really great. I'm loving all my classes. And I can speak on behalf of my peers as well. They're also loving their classes, especially being a senior in high school now. I'm looking forward to all the upcoming events. And I'm just really excited to be a part of this team. So thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you answered the only question I had. You are a senior. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any old or new business to come before the Board at this time? Ms. Lau?
I would just like to bring up that for homecoming, it was nice to see and hear people in the community commenting as to how well the field looked and the grounds all around. And Mr. Casey was there early, making sure that he was able to, you know, get his grounds crew ready and set for the events. So it was nice to see the community out and about, speaking such positively. And they also mentioned the area with tables and now how all of the rock area it is. And that came up in conversation, too. That's all I have.
Yeah, they really enjoyed it. Yes, Dr. Zercher?
I have a new business item as well. I just wanted to inform the Board that Ms. Lau and I will be presenting at the State School Boards Convention this season. And we will be doing a presentation for other superintendents and Board members that's centered on our outdoor spaces and how we use them for learning.
Outstanding.
Yeah, we submitted and we're a proposal and we're accepted.
It's great.
That's great. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very nice. Okay, any other old or new business for the Board? At this time, we're going to ask our attorney if he has any report for us.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mrs. Lau, amen of the bills.
I would like to abstain from bill list ID number 3846.
Noted.
And then the Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the School Business Administrator Board Secretary, be paid as listed and ISO move.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Lau. Is there a second?
Nielsen.
Second by Vice President Nielsen. Are there any other questions or abstentions with regard to the bill list? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The bills will be paid. Okay, so at this time, we are now going to open up the meeting for the public to address any concern or comment that they have for the Board. We ask that you come to the mic, you state your name and address, and that you please keep your comments limited to a 10-minute time limit. This is on first call.
My name is Norman Scheinberg and I live at 24 New Street. I like your screen. Makes it easier to see the people that are up there. In the past, I couldn't see most of the people because of the tight angle. If you had like about a 30-degree angle, then we could actually see who's talking. He's out of mind, to be seen. Well, of course, I've been talking to you for well over a year, I guess now, about school shootings and school safety. The previous school year has ended and new school year has began. The school year is usually given from July to July. So I want to report some more about school shootings. So I gave you loads of statistics on and information about just the last year, because I didn't report on that. So let me just start what I'm saying here. I'm going to present an update on school shootings for the 24-25 school year, the school year is from July to July. There was one school shooting in New Jersey during last year while the school was in session. It happened because a security guard accidentally fired his gun in the bathroom. No one was injured. Just one school shooting in the entire state and it was due to the security guard. The shooting occurred on 5/16/2025 in Midland Elementary School in Paramus. There was another incident this year in Saris, California, where an SRO's gun was again accidentally fired. Fortunately, no one was injured. Another incident this year involving a police officer's firearm in a school occurred in Cincinnati, Ohio, when a police officer shot himself in the foot while clearing hallways after a hoax. No one was injured. Probably a lot more, you know, where guns didn't actually go off. But I've read about them, where they just left guns in the bathroom being found by other people. When school boards and politicians put tens of thousands of guns in school, and by the way, it's heading towards 100,000 because we're starting to get one in every school. There's 130,000 schools, including private schools. Well, anyway, when school boards and politicians put tens of thousands of guns in school that otherwise would not be there, what do you expect will happen? I just told you what would happen. In fact, I told you this last year, that police officers make mistakes, these guns will go off, students will grab them, things will happen. Police officers will fall, they'll forget them. Hundred thousand guns potentially being put in schools. Well, last year was typical regarding school shootings for the country as a whole. There were 14 students killed on school grounds and about 75 wounded for the entire country. That's not New Jersey, the entire country, while the school was in session. To put that in perspective, in a typical year, about 1,500 to 2,000 children and teens are murdered each year off school grounds. And usually, there's about a four to one killed to wounded. So there's probably about 8,000 wounded. So about 8,000 children are wounded, shot and wounded off campus. By the way, off campus, I'm including about those that are shot, those that are just walking in or leaving school. I mean, off campus, you know, completely off campus. 75 wounded in schools, 2,000 almost killed outside of schools, another 1,000 that are committed suicide. I mean, anybody who wants to try to solve a school shooting problem of children and puts all their massive amounts of effort into trying to solving something that's about one-tenth of 1% of the problem, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, schools are incredibly safe. They're the absolute safest place in the country for kids. There's no place safer. Now, okay, of the 56 shootings last year, this is again, the whole country. Of the 56 shootings last year that resulted in a student-age victim, there have been more shootings, but very often, there are no victims. So of the 56 shootings last year that resulted in a student-aged victim, the situation was characterized in the K-12 school shooting database as 19 were escalation of violence. Escalation of violence means that two students get into an argument and the most typical place for that to happen is in the parking lot. And one student goes to his car, pulls out a gun. Remember, these things occur most often in the South and Midwest and rural areas, not in New Jersey. And the kid pulls out a gun and shoots the other kid. It's over in seconds. And boom, he runs off or rides off. So 19 were escalation of violence. Eight were drive-by shootings. They're over in seconds also. Nothing you could do about these things, absolutely nothing, based upon any security that you're implementing, which is basically prison kind of security. I can get to that later. I can get to that later. Five were accidental, where guns just went off accidentally. Four were indiscriminate and involved active shooters, the kind we worry about most, that if somebody just comes in to kill anybody, there were four of those. There were a few more of unknown situations as well. Of the 56 school shootings nationwide that resulted in a victim, eight occurred inside the building. The rest, 48, occurred outside the building. As I mentioned previously, most school shootings do not occur in the building. They occur in the parking lot, the schoolyard, in front of the building, the side of the building, not where your security is. All but two of the 56 shootings lasted less than a minute. The school shooting database simply says less than a minute. In reality, they lasted seconds. Of the two that lasted more than one minute, one lasted somewhere between one and two minutes. Those would be the active shooters. One in two minutes, it's over. And the other one, that was the Appalachia shooting, that was the big one last year, it lasted for two minutes. It actually took about 10 minutes for the police to put the person in handcuffs, but according to the sheriff, the Appalachia sheriff said he stopped shooting in two minutes. What happened is some police officers were about 250 feet away, they couldn't get any closer. The guy had an assault rifle, they had pistols. They were 250 feet away and simply asked him to stop shooting, but he already stopped shooting, so he put down his gun. He didn't want to die that day. Your security is inside the building, but most shootings that occur on school grounds count outside the school, and they're over in seconds. That's why the data I gave you that showed that schools that have security guards and schools that don't have the same number of shootings, so it doesn't help. And for some strange reason, I don't know why, schools that had security guards actually had three times as many casualties. That was the data from the school shooting databases. If you think that the presence of an armed security guard will deter an active school shooter, that's the kind we worry about most. Studies show otherwise. A school shooter that shoots someone in the building is committing murder in front of a large number of witnesses who know him. Getting caught or even killed is just not a deterrent. The real power of police officers is not stopping crime. Somebody doesn't rob a bodega when a police officer is there. The real power of police officers is arresting the criminals, investigating the crime and arresting them. That's in terms of crime. I mean, police officers spend most of their time doing other things, but if you have no fear of being killed, if you have no fear of being arrested, the police have no power over you. They're not going to be there when the crime is committed. Your security guard will be on the second floor, and your shooter will be in the classroom somewhere. That's what happens. Remember, your shooter knows exactly what your security is. In fact, what shooters have done is, is they've shot into closets, because they know the students will be hiding in closets. That's happened. Any tiny loophole in your security, like put in a metal detector, well, when they go between classes, they'll go out the back door and take the gun that they hid in the bushes and come back in. Even the metal detectors don't keep them out, because they know exactly what you're going to do. So, all these prison kind of security measures that you're taking won't work, because schools simply aren't run by prisons, as prisons. Imagine, I mean, everything you're doing is the same as prisons. I mean, you have cameras, you have automatic locks in schools now, you have lockdown drills, you have metal detectors, you have armed guards. There's only one other place besides schools that has that kind of security, that's trying to protect itself from internal and external assault, not forts. People often say they're turning into forts, but forts only protect themselves from external attack. Those that protect themselves from internal attack are prisons. So, this whole school security thing is being modeled after prisons. But how effective would prison security be if every afternoon, the prisoners came home, and every day, the prisoners went back in carrying whatever they wanted, and every 40 minutes, a bell rang, and all the doors opened to the prisons, and the prisoners can just wander around wherever they wanted? And you had only one prison guard for 1,000 students, whereas in a real prison, they'll have about one security guard for every 10 inmates. So, prison security is ineffective.
You have two minutes, Scheinberg.
What's that?
You have two minutes.
Okay, oh, go on. Okay, so, so, school security guards don't do anything, but their guns can do only one thing, and that's kill people. That's all. Their gun is just worthless, unless you want them to shoot themselves or somebody else. Currently, more and more schools are modeling the security of what works in prisons. I just mentioned that. All the data in school shootings lead only to one conclusion: schools are incredibly safe, and doing what you're doing makes them safer, will not make them any safer. So, why is the nation so obsessed with school shootings, such that billions of dollars are now being spent each year in a vain, a vain effort to save the lives of several students a year? There's a billion-dollar industry, multiple billions. Perhaps the answer lies in a saying attributed to Stalin. "The death of one person is a tragedy, the death of millions is a statistic." 1,500 students killed outside of school is treated with a shrug, but when several students are killed in a school shooting, it is treated as a national tragedy. By the way, it's up to you people to set this thing right, to end this kind of moral panic. I can define a moral panic, but I don't have time. There's a moral panic with the school shootings. To end it, the way these things end is, is the people in authority tell the people out there, what you believe is true is not true, that the danger you believe in is not there, that the schools are incredibly safe. By putting in security guards, by putting in clear backpacks, you're only reinforcing the fact that the schools aren't safe, and something must be done. That's the way all the moral panics end in the end. Higher authorities come in and just put an end to it. And that's really your job, is to stand up to the people out there and say what you're asking us to do is sheer nonsense, and we're not going to do it. You're not politicians. It doesn't matter whether you're elected or not elected. Politicians, that's their job. If they're not elected, they're out of office, who knows what they'll do? If you people aren't elected, well, you just do what you normally do. You have jobs, you have lives. Out of that, and that's what I see you're doing wrong, that you're not telling the people out there that this is not real, that these schools are not being shoed up, nothing's happening. Remember, 50 years, no one killed. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scheinberg. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the Board of Education on any matters of concern for the Board of Education? On first call? On second call?